Recording in progress.
All the regular meeting of the Riedel City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Barnes?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Carter?
Here.
Councilmember Orr?
Here.
Councilmember Wilson?
Here.
Councilmember Woodall?
Here.
Okay, there's nothing to report out of closed session. Now, when you stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ceremonial matters. Chief Bennett, certificate of recognition to Shanely Hammond. And I apologize.
Shanely.
Shanely.
Madam Mayor, Honorable Councilmembers, it is my pleasure tonight to introduce Mr. Shanely Hammond and present him with this official commendation from the Riedel Police Department and the City of Riedel. On behalf of the City of Riedel and the Riedel Police Department, I am honored to formally recognize and commend Mr. Shanely Hammond for his courageous and selfless actions during a residential fire that occurred at eighteen N eighty-three Riverside Drive on May eighth, twenty twenty-five. Upon discovering the fire, Mr. Hammond took immediate and decisive action entering the burning residence without regard for his own safety. His swift response and bravery directly resulted in a successful rescue of a male occupant who may not have survived without Mr. Hammond's intervention. His actions exemplify the highest standards of civic responsibility, valor, and humanity. It is with great pride and gratitude that the Riedel Police Department presents this official commendation to Mr. Shanely Hammond for his heroic conduct and outstanding service to the community.
All right, smiles, everybody? This one doesn't make noise, but.
Thank you. Number two, our ceremonial matters, proclamation and honor of Older Americans Month. Page six in our packets. Things come forward. And I will read the proclamation and then if you have words to say, happy period.
Great, thank you.
Proclamation in honor of Older Americans Month, May twenty twenty-five. Whereas it is time to flip the script on aging by transforming how society perceives, discusses, and approaches aging, challenging outdated stereotypes, dispelling misconceptions, and embracing the opportunities for purpose, exploration, connection, and continued engagement that aging brings. And whereas the Area One A Agency on Aging brings more than three million dollars in state and federal funding to Humboldt and Deloitte Counties to support programs and services that promote independence, health, security, and choice for older Americans and their families. And whereas A one AA's vital services include enhanced information and assistance, the volunteer driver program to assess medical appointments, and aging in place services such as fall prevention, homemaker assistance, and North Coast home share to provide housing support, safety, and advocacy, and promotes health and wellness through sale, stay active and independent for life. Exercise classes and CalFresh Healthy Living Nutrition and Exercise Program and provides funding for local mills on wheels and migrant mill sites, legal assistance for older adults, and family caregiver support services. And whereas the Long Term Care Budsmen Program safeguards the rights and dignity of residents in skilled nursing, assisted living, and other long-term care settings by advocating for quality of care and respectful treatment. And the Health Insurance Counseling and Advocacy Program provides unbiased, accurate information about Medicare and assistance in assessing medical resources. And whereas the Aging and Disabilities Resource Connection, a partnership with Tri-County Independent Living and the North Coast Health Improvement and Information Network, works to streamline and coordinate services for older adults, people with disabilities, caregivers, and families. And whereas any reduction in federal or state funding would jeopardize the health, safety, and independence of those served, putting them at greater risk of injury, hospitalization, isolation, institutionalization, and homelessness outcomes that run counter to the spirit of flipping the script on aging. Now, therefore, be proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Riedel recognizes May twenty twenty-five as Older Americans Month. This year's theme, Powered by Connections, emphasizes the profound impact that meaningful interactions and social connections on the well-being and health of older adults in our community and urges residents to promote programs and activities that foster connection, inclusion, and support for older adults, dated May twentieth, twenty twenty-five.
I'm breaking things.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Absolutely, and if you'd like to.
Yeah, I, it's great being here, it's great seeing all of you, it's great being here when there's no disaster. I love it. I wanted to come here in this circumstance. And I brought with me our High Cap Program Manager. You've got an longer-than-usual proclamation because I thought it was really important right now with everything happening in the state and federally, that you actually know what resources are here, what services are being provided in our communities. And yeah, it's only three million dollars, but that's three million dollars that stays in this community, that pays people, that helps people find resources. So I thought it'd be a good opportunity to kind of give you the laundry list.
Right.
But I invited Rosanna here to talk specifically about what she, what we do to help people on Medicare, especially people who are on Medi-Cal and Medicare. You know, the folks that really need that, those services, to make sure they remain independent and get their needs met. So she's got some data, little statistics we're open for you.
Welcome. Thank you for being here.
Hi, my name is Rosa Rodg, I'm the High Cap Program Manager. And as you said, High Cap stands for Health Insurance Counseling Advocacy Program. We help people with Medicare. Our main focus is to make sure they have the benefits that they need and pay the least possible. So one very interesting number that we have is we have thousands of people. In twenty twenty-four, we helped along in Humboldt County, two thousand and seventy-six beneficiaries. And overall, we identified savings for almost one point seven million dollars. And that comes from savings with drug prescription plans, with medical benefits, low-income subsidies, supplement insurance, et cetera, et cetera. And in Riedel alone, I brought this data. Beneficiaries saved around thirty-five thousand dollars in twenty twenty-four, which is money the state and the community. So it's very important.
Exactly.
Yeah, and we not only receive the funding, but we make sure that the money stays there.
And one thing we're just talking about is that we are looking for private office space that we can use every once in a while here in Riedel to see folks. We have a good relationship with the Family Resource Center, but they don't have a private office we can use. And obviously, this is the kind of stuff you don't want to do in a big room.
Right.
So if anyone out there has a room that they might occasionally be able to let us use to drop in, especially during open enrollment with this October through December, that would really help us get to more people here in Riedel. So just cut that away.
Yeah, I mean, we do look out. We do have a counseling site in Fortuna, and we lost the place, the counselor, and right away. And otherwise, people have to go either Fortuna or Eureka. And a lot of people, it's so much better when you do in-person counseling.
You might not even have transportation.
That's right, that's right. So we offer, you know, telephone appointments, but it's a lot better.
In person, it is.
Like Maggie said, if you know.
Oh, there we go. Look at that. I mean, we have.
I want to write email. We actually.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam.
Yeah, this is a, this community really is an important community to us. We've seen how you pull together under very difficult circumstances. We've seen how, without you doing that, you sometimes get left behind. And, and, and that's not what we want to see ever happen. So we're, we want to get our services to your residents and not make them drive all the way anywhere. So, thank you, Madam. Thank you.
We have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions, Connor?
A lot of people calling homes along the city that might fall under this proclamation. So we appreciate every effort that you're doing.
Thank you.
And you guys are awesome, and you, I know personally, people that you support. Just thank you.
Thank you.
Very much, and thanks for coming today.
Thanks.
Public presentations. This is the time for persons who wish to address the council on any matter not on this agenda and over which the council has jurisdiction. As such, a dialogue with the council or staff is not allowed under the Ralph M. Brown Act. Items requiring council actions listed on this agenda may be placed on the next regular agenda for consideration if the council directs, unless a finding is made by at least two-thirds of the council that the item came up after the agenda was posted and is of the urgency nature requiring immediate action. Please limit comments to a maximum of three minutes. Would anyone like to come speak to the council on any item not on the agenda? Hi, Sharon.
Hello.
Welcome.
Hi, Sharon Wolf, Three Pinter Street. And I really appreciated the proclamation for Older Americans Month. Thank you very much. And I'm really looking forward to their Elder Justice Summit that is coming up later this month because they do an awesome job with that, and it always presents really good information. So I encourage anyone who can attend to go look at those as well. In addition to May being Older Americans Month, it's also the May Revised Month for the state budget. So if I look traumatized, it's because I've been looking at budget hearings for a week now. And it's, it's horrible. It's terrible. So one of the things, as I'm sure you know, we have a state deficit. It's a multi-year deficit. It's been multiple years now. Huge deficits, has nothing to do with current circumstances. This is a creation entirely of California's fundraising. So when the budget is coming out and the May revised came out, the very first thing, one of the very first things that they proposed to cut this budget deficit was to go after seniors because that's what California does. Unfortunately, the Medi-Cal asset test limit for seniors was set originally in nineteen eighty-nine. It hadn't been adjusted for all these years. It is a two thousand dollar limit, asset limit for an individual, three thousand dollars for a couple, seven eighty-nine. They fought it out for years and years, trying to do something about this, get this updated for inflation. It never happened. Finally, they got it done. They did it, the elimination of the asset test was done in two phases. In twenty twenty-two, they raised the limit to a hundred and thirty thousand dollars for an individual. Significant increase. That was terrific. January first, twenty twenty-four, eliminated the asset test entirely. May fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, proposed to eliminate that entirely and pull it back to the nineteen eighty-nine level. Not reset it, not bring it back halfway to that hundred and thirty thousand, put it back at nineteen eighty-nine levels of two thousand dollars. That doesn't count one home and one car. Heaven help you if you have furnishings in your house because that will be over two thousand dollars. I'm watching these budget hearings, and the legislature, first of all, they're pissed. They're really pissed at the May revise. So there's all kinds of fireworks that are going on. But there's not much that they can do because we have a massive budget deficit. This particular vicious cut, in my opinion, is hardly even making the press because all the other talking is going on about cutting other populations that we know for a fact are going to have the federal benefits cut for them. The state is going to have to come back and do something at that point. That's getting a lot of attention, a lot of other cuts. The senior asset test limit is not getting the attention that it needs because unfortunately, it's senior citizens. And I'm increasingly becoming one of them, and I love many of them. And we need these services desperately. So I tell this to you because you will be dealing with budgets. You will be having the outcome of the state budget filtering down to you. So that's going to be really unpleasant. But I encourage you, anywhere that you can, as an elected official, to try to lobby, try to speak up for the seniors in this particular benefit that they fought for for years and finally got and immediately yanked the second the state had the opportunity to. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. That's, that's huge. Is there anyone else who would like to make a comment on anything on the agenda? Are there any hands raised? Are there any? And we will close public presentations and move to the consent calendar. Is there anyone on council who would like to pull an item from the consent calendar?
No.
Anyone from the public? How's the commotion that we approved? We have a motion. Is there a second? Second, there are a motion and a second. Please vote. Motion carries five zero. The force of communications, city manager, page thirty-four in our packets.
Thank you, Mayor Barnes, members of the council. So on your desk here at the days was a, just a printout of the proposed CalFire design that was presented last week or by the, by CalFire DGS for the proposed CalFire facility. They're doing a notice of preparation meeting for CEQA, which basically just invites comments for things that they should be looking at before they start environmental impact report, so that by the time the report gets out there, you know, people have the opportunity to make sure that certain things are in there. So it was more of an open house event, and I know that a number of the council members also attended. And that is all I have to comment on that. Our earthquake road repair project is almost finished for Yellow, Fern, and Riverside Streets. There's a little bit more that has to be done on Riverside for the manhole location there. And then we are expecting before the end of the month, according to the contractor's original estimate, separate contractor, separate project to start on Delmont Street shortly. So that's good news. Our waterline replacement project is expected to ramp up significantly over the next couple of weeks. We've had some crews individually in town for the past two months or so. But we're about to have approximately three to four separate crews, all working separate locations at the same time in town. And so there will be disruptions, you know, to road traffic, to, you know, potentially temporary for water service in specific neighborhoods where the water project is underway. So we just encourage the public to have patience as this incredibly important project gets fully underway. And then the Yell River Trail official opening will occur on June tenth, starting at ten thirty a.m. to twelve noon on the trail. The guests of honor will be the students from the, and the schedule's based around schedule availability for the children from the elementary school to attend. And it'd be a pretty informal affair, but it'll be our official. With that, unless there's any questions for staff, staff is happy to answer any questions that the council may have. Thank you.
Thank you, city manager. Will it be notice on the waters and interruptions? Will the neighborhoods be given?
Yeah, so the contractors responsible to do that, neighborhood by neighborhood, they'll have more up-to-date information on when, how long, that will be restored, that sort of thing.
Awesome. Mayor Pro Tim? You know what I'm gonna say. There were zero cats transported to Miranda's rescue this time around. We haven't had cats transported there for a while. I know that I'm likely the only feral cat lady in the room, but it is peak kitten season right now. Peak. The fact that we have gone on for quite some time with it and zero cats transported is, we're doing very well. And one of these dogs was a surrenderer, so one of two, correct? And then can I ask, what are the other animal-related issues that you guys get calls for?
Animals running at large.
Yeah.
Animals off leash sometimes, barking dog, noise complaints, that everything.
But not like, there's a possum in my yard.
No, not usually.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to make sure you weren't dealing with that too. So yeah, that, that is my only comment, is I just really want to praise the city for our new take on animal control and the police department for the help that you give, and also for our finance director for being the person whose office I run into and ask a bunch of questions and say a bunch of stuff. We really, really are doing it right, and I'll talk more about it in my member report. You can count on it. That's it for me. Thank you. Thank you. City member Wilson?
Yeah, just one question, city manager. You know, the district does an excellent, great job. Now, did we get, oh, yes, only page four? We're projected for seventy-five percent less?
Correct. So under the California Disaster Assistance Act, CDAA, the city is eligible for a seventy-five percent reimbursement. It's basically a guarantee. The remaining twenty-five percent, we will submit an application. Once all the paperwork is processed, we receive payment for the seventy-five percent to apply for the remaining twenty-five percent. And so we are AB twenty-one forty compliant. And so that process is a little bit opaque in terms of the timeline for the hundred percent reimbursement, but we will be making application for that as we will be for all the projects.
Approximately, how much is that, twenty-five percent? We, because we're obviously have to pay for the job.
Just off the top of my head, I would estimate twenty-five thousand dollars for that, that portion that potentially the city may have to go unreimbursed for, just for those.
And then we have to pay the other part upfront. But the other, so we're finally telling them, yes, that's what we discussed.
Yeah, so the city has to pay everything upfront. So, so the contractor is, is, you know, basically a payment, progress payments, and payment basically, you know, basically shortly after their construction is done. So probably just even invoice here in the next week or two, and then thirty days to pay it. We pay it all upfront. We then go to the state and get the seventy-five percent reimbursement. And then the process for the twenty-five percent match could take an additional four months, possibly even longer, or even be denied.
And then we have it in reserve on it?
Yes.
Well, I believe that is all I have.
Councilor.
I just want to say thank you to Randy again. Another two weeks of going above and beyond, and still, and I see him out there, standing on my porch, smiling on the way to work, so. Keeping up appearances anyway.
Thank you. Councilmember Woodall?
Well, I'm just gonna sneak this in here. Shane? I want to thank you for the fire and everything you guys did. That must have been a really difficult situation there, and we all appreciate what the fire department does for us. I just wanted to thank you.
Say it here, here to that. And I have a question. So I think we will close. City. Does anyone have a question? Any member of the public have a question for the city manager? The staff reports? And then I will close that and move on to special call Island City Council. Priority setting second for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty-six, page thirty-nine in our packets. Pretty much.
Thank you, Mayor Barnes, members of the council. By now, the council is kind of well briefed on this process and procedure. But every year for the budget and planning for the, for the upcoming fiscal year, we ask the council to have a really broad. uh, we ask the council to have a a really broad priority uh discussion about um issues and areas that the council would like to see uh staff focus on and potentially if needed to incorporate uh dollars uh for the budget. So these are really broad uh overarching categories, kind of consistently in the history of the of the council. The city has uh placed a street planning and street related work as one of the top priorities, items like code enforcement, reducing staff turnover, um uh SC thirteen eighty-three organic waste regulations, um, community development, uh, public safety, uh, and the initiation of economic development plan. Um, uh, as as many of your your consistent priorities over the years, including twenty twenty-four. Uh, the city council identified Public Works uh as the number one priority, mostly related to earthquake-related activities. Uh, public safety staffing, um, as the council and community are well aware, it's uh you know, there's uh less people entering the career of law enforcement in the academy and whatnot. Uh, economic developments, uh, and streets planning work. And then parks and youth uh round out the the five priorities identified. So these are kind of broad uh high hit list item targets that then later in the year, we kind of zero in on specific plans related to working on each of those topics. And so and so and I would just remind the council if uh, you know, if uh, if we feel that we we need additional time to have the uh good conversation over the the uh uh prioritization, uh that we can always schedule a special study session. Uh, staff is just requesting that that study session be scheduled uh before May twenty eighth, so that any changes that the council wants to make, we can make sure get incorporated into the budget um and whatnot for the coming year. Um, so again, this is an opportunity for the council to discuss your individual priorities. And then from there, uh, help to just have the conversation to develop the collective priorities that the city council as a body wants uh for the coming years. Um, so typically the conversation occurs, each individual council member gets an opportunity to opine. Uh, then uh you should have a series of colored post-it notes on your table. And what we will do is have you write down those individual priorities. We will then take those and in between now and the next meeting, we will collate them into a list and present that at the city council's next regularly scheduled meeting, which Karen is on which date?
June third.
June third. Um, so with that, uh, Madam Mayor, I'm happy to answer any questions that the council may have. Uh, and and back to the mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, city manager. Um. Ignore what you have to say. Categories, but we don't, we don't have to do that. I just like have a lawful doubt. I can, I can manage. So, um, is anyone like to speak first? Do you want me to just start?
Julie, I just have a question. So if we do this tonight, can we still have a study session beforehand to go over, you know, like you mentioned, just to sort of work them out? I mean, I would, I wouldn't like that, and I don't think anybody else would.
I don't see a reason.
Yeah.
Are there, does everybody, I would ask, does everyone or anyone wanna make comment? Does everyone just wanna write down their priorities? And did we have to say them out loud and then?
I'll make one comment.
Okay.
I have one prior. No, I have a couple priorities. Um. Parks. I'm I'm gonna just harp on this somewhere. We are a city with no city parks. And every time I go to these Cal Cities meetings or even reading meetings locally, everybody's like, look at our park that's brand new. Look at Blue Lake has a park, you know, and they're just dangling these parks in front of my face. Um. My top priority right now is gonna be parks and open public space, just because we don't have any of it. Um. As we all know, I've been working very hard with the school board to, you know, work out a site for a park and it's it's moving. It's moving better than it ever has before. So, um, I I obviously have other priorities and I can list those too, but um, I'm gonna really, really harp on the on the parks and open space. So our kids have somewhere to be and do and things that are a little bit more productive than some of the things kids get into when they got nothing to do.
Thank you. Council member four?
Uh, no questions.
Uh, council member Wilson?
Well, I think, but just write down, just write down what we're gonna do, then we're gonna we're gonna bring these back to the next meeting and then discuss them.
Okay, or a special.
It sounds like a special meeting before.
Yeah. Yes.
And and of the uh and of the June thirteenth.
Finance is important. Um, closing out our infrastructure grants and getting those done. And also execute execute the um ARCA money to to, it expires twenty-six in twenty-six, so I think we should need to get on that. Um, code enforcement is always one. And I'm looking at the new list of the things that the code enforcement, the girls CSO, not girls, are gonna do. There seems like there's it started out, it was nuisance abatement and animal control. But looking at the list, it's also code, so there'd be, it seems like there'll be more for them to look at, health and safety codes and that. And so I think code enforcement is a big one. Police staffing, I would love to see twenty-four hour police. I mean, that would be such a benefit for the city. Um, public works, public works has a big, there's a lot for our city and they need to, they get more help, they need to have good help and, you know, I think we need to concentrate on that. And this is a little itty-bitty one that I hope we can work into. One of the other parts of the budget is Main Street. There's a few things to do at the park. This is not a big thing, but it would make our town look better. And on the center divide, we, it needs to be refreshed. Not a big overdone thing, but some of the dead plants need to be cut out. And it needs to be taken care of. And that's just a little thing, but I'd like to make sure that we can get it done this year in the budget somewhere. It's a small thing, but it's important to me. And that's it. Thank you. So.
I I also.
Need to save them up.
Yeah, code enforcement, public works, public safety.
Oh, I have one down.
But do you wanna say I'm really just passing by hand?
Public works, police department staffing and retention, nuisance abatement and universal trash collection, beautification and occupation of businesses on Wildwood and juvenile involvement in city government and redevelopment.
Thank you for that last one. I didn't get council member there, Wilson?
Yes. Okay, I have uh.
People know.
There there's been discussion about the possibility of me processing, finding the labor persona development of downtown business history. The earthquake red flag, uh the parents can wrap that up. I think it's about them to get that. Get what that's one, uh, enforcement recruiting to get that fully staffed again. Uh, we made it once. You got behind it and then more to sure employer recruitment. We seem to that's my line.
Um, and um, I began with economic development because we need economic development because all those other nice wonderful things we talk about, we can't do without funds. So economic development is my very first one. Parks and open spaces, public safety, police uh staffing and organization and code enforcement. Which is kind of insane. Okay, so we're gonna put it down. I just thought it was important that we say them out loud so the public knows what we're up here chatting down. Thank you. Yeah.
And if there's any public.
Yeah. A- is everyone here finished with their comments?
Yes.
Okay. Is there, are there any comments from the public or any questions? Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Dalil, I'm a business owner here in the city. Um, I hear.
Could you speak up just a little bit?
Um, I hear everything you guys are saying. I'm all for it. They're exactly what I see that our city needs here as a business owner looking out my window. I hear a lot of things coming back down to this gentleman's table. I hear all these things that are great and I hear one major thing, the common denominator is staffing. We don't have enough policing. I think there's a solution. If there's ramping out there for the technology, maybe we need to start looking into closed circuit TV where they can monitor and get maybe someone more uh proficient in police monitoring technology to be able to take off pressure off of actual bones out there. Now they can look at hotspots like public places, uh, new places that we are creating, like the trails. Uh, places that could slow down traffic, maybe slow down certain, I mean, all the activities in the community and maybe where the people can also vote where those places are without approaching too much on our privacy, but you know, there's no expectation of privacy uh in public. But I also believe that um, there's a there's a good way to use technology, maybe using drones and putting out a drone if there's motorcycles out there instead of sending a unit. You could send out a drone that had actually, I've seen it on on other policing in other cities where they actually catch the kids, send out a unit. You can't lie. We got you on a drone. People say, well, he has to see it. Well, if he gets on closer for TV, camera never blinks, but can look at it. And I think that has status being reduced or being lost. I think that that might be a good solution of adapting technology like some of the bigger cities. We are small. But you can also use technology to our advantage. It may be a double edged sword for the community, but we're a small town and all I hear is problems. And I I try to focus on solutions. And I think that that might be something that I wanted to know until you guys are thinking, maybe through technology and looking for funding for technology.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any, any hand raised? Any emails? Then we will close this, but we will close this uh by um saying to the city manager to send out a call for the special meeting so that we can do that prior to the twentieth. Now move on to proposed staffing changes for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty-six, page forty-four in our packets. City manager, and I will say that on this subject, we are talking about positions. Not persons, but positions.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Garne and members of the council. So um, every year as we get into the budget season, we do a review on our uh staffing positions in the city. Um, and go over the organizational chart for the city, which is an important component of the uh overall budget and uh personnel expenditures are, you know, by far the largest category of expenditures uh in city government. Um, so uh, the uh uh organizational chart is located on your uh packet on page forty-seven as proposed, uh, if the changes associated with this item are approved. Um, so our significant changes proposed uh for the upcoming fiscal year um starts as follows. Uh, the addition of one full-time community services officer, CSO position, uh, which is uh currently approved for Measure Z funding uh for FY twenty-five, twenty-six. At this point in time, uh, we do not anticipate that Measure Z funding uh will continue beyond this fiscal year. Uh, however, uh we do have the funding for one CSO and an addition of the city currently also employs a CSO. Uh, the CSO uh addition will allow greater cross-training and succession of services both in the field and in the office. And by expanding the scope of responsibilities to include the clerical and records-related work will also increase the cross-training and succession planning uh for those positions and that is um an improved service for the community, for the department internally. Uh, so through this recommendation, uh, there would be one hire that would be anticipated for uh uh moving forward, uh, and that the city is committed to figuring out how to uh fund the position long term uh beyond uh the one-year Measure Z time horizon. We certainly will be next year, maybe have a location again. Uh, but we don't anticipate that, and we don't expect uh that Measure Z would continue to fund that position. So, uh, related is the deletion of a part-time records technician, uh, part previously measured funded by Measure Z until this fiscal year. Uh, the duties would be assigned across uh the two CSOs for FY twenty-five, twenty-six. Um, thereby increasing the ability for us to uh send individuals off for training, uh, for sick days, for vacation, uh, et cetera. Um, part of the, you know, the overall uh guidance on this one is that we are having difficulty with recruiting officers, new officers, sworn law enforcement officers uh into the city. A lot of this is outside of the control of the department or the city, which is that there's just been a fundamental change over the past uh five or six years in terms of the number of people interested in entering the career field. And so by uh increasing the number of CSOs uh who can also work in the field and in the office, uh, we would be able to increase the flexibility uh for the department to uh to meet certain calls for service that don't necessarily result in a in a need for an armed officer to respond. Um, so we would also be, as part of the recommendation, deleting one half-time point five uh full-time equivalent position, police officer reserve position and one point six five part-time police officer reserve position. And then retaining uh some ability for the department at a point two five level uh to fill a police officer re- reserve position uh for the fiscal year. So we've had kind of two long-term incumbents uh who've worked with the city uh for a while, who are no longer available for that uh type of work. Um, and then uh outside of the police department would be the uh the recommendation to eliminate the public works leadman and to reassign that position as a utility worker. Uh, no layoff or hiring is anticipated with that. Um, so back to the police department again, the police department for this current fiscal year composes approximately seventy-three percent of general, all general fund expenditures in the city.
What was that number?
Seventy-three percent.
Thank you.
And so, uh, which is a pretty high ratio. Uh, and so looking forward for the upcoming fiscal year with these changes, it still is a uh net reduction to um wait, what am I trying to say here? It's uh um, I'm sorry, I'm having a moment, but um it's, it's, uh, we're still, we're adding a position, but we're we're kind of saving on the on the uh the cost associated with the department. And even with these changes and reducing it down, go from seventy-three percent to right now projected seventy percent for the uh for the upcoming fiscal year. Um, so the net changes across all the positions is a decrease in full-time equivalent positions across the general fund of point nine for the upcoming fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. across the general fund of point nine for the upcoming fiscal year twenty five, twenty six. So we're kind of taking a proactive champing down approach for the, for the capital city. Um, as you know, we continue to face financial challenges as the county, the state and our fellow neighboring cities are also encountering uh, financial challenges. So with that, um, happy to answer any questions that the council may have. In your packet on page forty-six is a uh, the position allocation table uh, for the city as proposed, and then page forty-seven is the organization. Thank you.
Thank you, city manager. Mayor Proton?
I have some questions, then I'm gonna direct them right to you, Chief Dean. Um, if we had two CSOs with no records tech, would the police department still be open during the normal hours? Like, would the community still be able to come in?
Yes, absolutely.
Would it maybe be open more?
I would say with two people here Monday through Friday, uh, during business hours, working out as a normal shift, uh, we can almost guarantee that absent sick days or vacation, we'll always have somebody here to answer, to answer the door. It's great.
And answer the phone and do, yeah, okay. Um, would code enforcement, if we had to be a little bit more proactive and rather than reactive and complaint-driven, if we had two CSOs instead of one?
Yes, it would. It's already edging that way.
Yeah.
Uh, our current CSO has been making a greater effort to go out there and address problems. Just today, we uh, got a cleanup done on Third Street here in town that we had been doing some help with them working on their property in the past and they just didn't make any progress. Somewhere it's very quick at jumping to getting done and it's done, done to them already. So I think with a second CSO, we would definitely be able to make a significant impact in the community.
Yes.
Neighborhood with, you know, people that are suffering with other neighbors that don't keep their, their property cleaned up and infest their yards with rats.
Mm-hmm. Um, and when I, when I ask about reactive versus proactive, it's, it's not a reflection on Mary. I know that when we had the big earthquakes, it did, I'm on the nuisance abatement committee also for anybody who's in the room. Um, we, we had to kind of change our take on code enforcement a little bit just because we had so many bigger problems and then all of a sudden these, you know, these homes that had fallen apart were technically code issues and, and so we did kind of have to take a step back um, a little bit. So that's what I mean by that. Um, next. Do you feel like having two CSOs would be, you know, a more of a support system for sworn officers considering that we are having trouble recruiting law enforcement?
Yes, I do think so. A CSO has a wide variety of duties that they can perform and can do almost everything that sworn officer can do except make an arrest and obviously carry a gun.
Yeah.
Uh, so they can be out there integrating with the community, face-to-face, solving problems, backing up officers on calls, assisting with collection of evidence. I could go on and on.
Yeah.
Their duties that they can fulfill are vast.
Um, last question. Would, would either or both CSO need to stay together or with another officer? Or could they kind of be out on their own in the field?
Yes, enough.
Yeah.
So it depends. Some situations, or at least the initial contact on some types of calls might require a second person for safety reasons or an officer even to be with them uh, until the situation is deemed to be stable and everybody's, you know, minding their manners and getting along and, and then they can split off and then go back to doing things separately.
Okay, thank you. Those are my questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Orr.
Um, there was a little answer.
Councilmember Woodall.
Yes. This is sort of, um, I don't know if you know that. Who made the call that a CSO was more important to the city than a police officer when they were looking at what they were going to ask for, for a um, the grant?
I did, Councilmember Woodall, and that is because I knew that Measure Z would not approve funding for an officer position when we can't even fill the two vacant officer positions that we currently have. It's a waste of money and waste of allocated funds for them. I knew that we could fulfill a CSO position and they agreed with me on that.
Okay. Okay. I have to write this up. My memory is, okay. So this article, this is along with the main to ask, the staff, the office will be staffed at the same amount of hours as it is now, possibly even more?
Yes.
And will, and you said the CSO's officers will be working the same hours? They, they, they won't offset, so maybe we have some help a little bit later? Or we have open on Saturday or?
My intent as of right now is to have them both working Monday through Friday. Uh, once training is completed with the new CSO, I would definitely be open to some staggered hours for better coverage.
So one of them, or both of them at different points, will essentially be doing the record clerk's um, position at a higher rate of pay.
That is correct.
Okay, so if they're doing that position at the same amount of hours, well, probably eight more because the record clerk only works thirty-two, I believe. Um, that will put, essentially, a forty-hour-a-week person in the office every week, all day.
Yes, well, the duties of the current records clerk will be distributed among staff come fiscal year change. So we're talking, we'll have, Monday through Friday, we'll have a forty-hour employee in the office all the time.
Okay.
And that's just the CSO, that's not, that's not talking about the officers.
No, that's what I was talking about, the office. So essentially, then if they're in the office for forty hours, which we do need somebody in there for walk-ins, then we're really not getting any extra help on the CSO part. I mean, we still just have, in essence, the position that was there. Now we have a CSO that has quite a few different things that they can do, but they won't be doing it because they're doing that job.
I get what you're saying.
Yeah.
And what I would say to that is, there's a lot that goes into CSO's job that is behind the scenes. So let's take a standard abatement, for example. A lot of that time requires that employee to be in the office, writing paperwork, documenting, writing uh, abatement search warrants and sending that off to judges and documenting all these things. And then the same thing after the cleanup is done with the uh, fund reimbursement, submitting it to the tax people for reimbursement to the city. So there's a lot of in-office stuff that is already being done and that will still go on with both people in addition to them.
But the one will be doing different office duties and the other one will be taking care of the other duties.
They'll, they'll be sharing everything together equally.
Okay, because there are a lot of um, duties that I'm looking at. And um, just for information, the, the um, it went. The records clerk, the last two years has been on our payroll, not, just in, in this year. Um, okay, so I was talking to Kevin and um, I was mentioning earlier that the CSO would need to be more familiar with building codes, health and safety and zoning regulations, which it seems right now they're more nuisance abatement and animal control. So they would just have to seem to have more training than some of the other things they need to look at for um, code enforcement?
As far as building codes, that would be unusual in any city for a CSO to get involved in.
Oh, uh, uh, health and safety mainly, and they need to be aware of them, right?
Yes, absolutely.
Health and safety, they need to be aware of, like we have homes that are, okay. I answered about the different hours for them, so we could have more coverage. Um, who's going to provide the cleaning service? I don't think that's a huge question.
So, yeah, so that would be a separate question and uh.
So, they're not going to do that?
The, the CSOs, no?
No, okay, okay. Um, I also agree that if we're going to have two CSOs, that we need to move away from a complaint base um, reaction to a proactive action on things and not wait. And, and we also need to do it more efficiently and faster, which with two people, I think that would work. Um, well, are applicants going to be aware that the funding could only be for one year?
Uh, yes, they'll be notified of that.
Pardon?
Yes, they'll be notified of that.
Okay, and do you have an applicant background check right now?
We did a uh, precautionary one on one and we have a slew of interviews that will be scheduled directly following application closing period at the end of the month.
Okay, is it usual to start background checks before?
You can, for a position like a CSO, it's not like an officer, it's not nearly as in-depth. So you can run multiple different uh, background checks at the same time for a fraction of the cost. And that way they're able to move into the position quickly.
Okay, and um, okay. So when, and you may not know this, but when, and I mentioned it earlier, that when we established it, it was mainly nuisance abatement and animal control. When did it expand? This, I mean, I've noticed lately that Mary's been riding a lot around with Crystal. And so I'm assuming at this point that you've let it expand some. And I mean, obviously.
So if I, if I can jump on that one, the, the position has, has always included numerous roles and responsibilities, including acting that on, that's a, that's strictly a CSO.
Okay.
In addition to the two code enforcement activities, in addition to animal control.
So, but when we first started, it wasn't that way. I mean, I'm, I miss, I miss whenever it changed, but.
Go back to some of the original uh, documents.
Okay, okay, thank you. That's all. Thanks for your information. I appreciate it.
Councilmember Wilson.
Thank you. Um, Councilmember Woodall has asked a lot of my questions, particularly on the or about the, the uh, the Christmas janitor services in the office. That um, are we gonna have to contract that or are we just gonna?
Uh, it has been contracted before in the past.
So we're gonna probably have to do that again or is that probably?
Uh, we might have to, yeah, I don't, I don't know yet.
Okay, um, the department, and she, and she asked questions that you gave. Uh, the chief has given some good answers on that. One, one of the issues was that this had been a funded job that was previously only, has been in the past until this last year. Or I guess is it two now that we did not receive the funding from the county of the grant funding?
It's been two?
Hmm, it's been two years.
It's been two years. Got, got this year and the year before that we did not yet.
I believe so, yeah.
And not getting that grant, were we hoping that we were going to get that grant back? Or um, why, why, I mean, I guess I'm asking, we were presented that the budget and the council.
What, I think if you look at the history of the position, um, it has always been a struggle to pull the Measure Z funding from the county. And so uh, when your city manager went to initially get, achieve the, the uh, Measure Z, Measure Z grant funding, um, it was originally denied by the Measure Z committee and your city manager went directly to the board of supervisors uh, who agreed to fund the part-time records position. There were a couple of years in there where the position uh, was funded and then a couple where it was always touch and go as to whether it was going to be funded. And at one point, uh, I believe the funding was cut and then subsequently was, was returned and, and funded uh, for the position, so for Measure Z. So we went into the budget year thinking that it was not funded and then ended up becoming funded. So there's never been kind of a, a real secure process for Measure Z. Every year is a new year for Measure Z funding. Um, and so that's the, that's the history of that.
And so if it doesn't get funded, there's the, the discussion that if it doesn't get funded, I mean, the CSO position doesn't get funded for next year, that the, the, the general fund is going to be able to subsidize and cover that, is that what?
So that is, that is the plan. All options would be on the table. Again, we continue to fund officer positions in the department that we are not able to fill. And so what we are trying to do is reconfigure from a management perspective, the department to uh, to maximize our ability to deliver services, everything from the uh, from code enforcement to nuisance abatement to animal control uh, and uh, you know, create a more efficient package uh, for, you know, moving the department forward. Um, I will also just mention the Peace Officers Association uh, is endorsing the reorganization as proposed. Um, and uh, that uh, uh, you know, as we move forward, it's possible if we continue to be unable to fund uh, officer, fill officer positions that we may need to rely more and more on filling CSO positions to help kind of bridge the gap and still provide the servicing. Uh, you know, um, uh, you know, being available and that that's the most effective way to do it, to have everybody cross-trained on the admin side in totality um, to allow for vacations, sick leave, for uh, for separations of employment. Uh, where right now, if we were to have uh, the current CSO leave, uh, all of that knowledge, years and years of knowledge leaves and we not have a uh, succession plan to, we could basically be bringing somebody in from scratch uh, to basically retrain, which takes easily at least a year for anybody to get into that mode of operation. Um, so this has been kind of a long conversation over multiple chiefs of police as to what the best configuration is uh, for the department moving forward. And there has been uh, you know, uh, agreement that this reorganization needs to, uh, needs to occur.
The, because, you know, I, there's like, to me, there's a lot, it seems, seems like a lot unknowns, but there's, there's other functions that the police officers would have to assume. Uh, if we lose the record technician, because every, we're gonna give worse responsibility to the CSO person along with the records technician. So I don't, I, I understand that there's maintenance of vehicles and things that the police officers don't do now, but the records technician does. Are the officer going to have to pick up that and not be on our streets doing officer related things that officers do? Is that?
The workload will be split amongst all staff to absorb that. Uh, the CSOs will be taking um, the lion's share of the responsibilities. But you're absolutely right, council member, there are stuff like vehicle maintenance uh, and a few smother few other tasks of similar nature that will get assigned to an officer as a collateral duty to do, which is pretty normal for most departments to assign collateral duties to officers.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not, I'm not a student, but I'm, the, the, the part that struck, you know, the problem, and I'm sure we're all aware of it, is the, we are a small city and we have, it, it's like we need another person on this list, you know, all the responsibilities. And I've seen that in other locations where people were, you're trying to, you know, tell me go the way and you're trying to, you're trying to make, you're trying to spread those responsibilities out of everybody that's left and everybody's gonna pick it up. And I haven't seen, in particular, even places where there's limited amounts of, of personnel. You know, what, what, you know, we're still, we go to the public works and we get, take some of the public works, try to put them over something. So we're trying to, we're trying to put the bodies out to cover all the shop we want to do. One, in reality, one person short. And that's the person that we're, uh, because all of the, I assume whenever the record, the records technician is doing those, that's, there's probably more they could be doing, but we definitely need another CFO. That sounds reasonable, very reasonable for all the reasons that uh, the city managers mentioned. We need cross-training, we need backup, uh, we lose institutional knowledge of how we, if, if we lose one because of, well, there's only one. Um, and so that I think is um, it's a dilemma on how the city with limited finances. That's why I guess one of the big things on, for me anyway, is priority is we need more dollars in the bucket to distribute to the city. And that comes from the economic development side. We, they, we, we can't go on like we're going, as I see the street, I see the city changes downtown, I see things that happen, we don't have, we need more finances and, and essentially, uh, person to make this happen. Whether, uh, who that is is not my spot to decide. You know, I could battle all my, but I, I think I, through Councilmember Woodall's questions and, and the ones you've answered for me, I could think I'm good. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you. So I have some questions, but I'm just gonna have a moment to have everyone get all those other questions and ask Randy a question. So Randy, changing the lead person or the, to the utility, is that, how, how is that gonna work and does that work for you? And is that gonna be a better configuration?
It will, it will as our employees to, as you, as PD does also cross-train a little bit more. We have someone missing, gone for a week. We have someone that has lack of knowledge on other priorities that need to be done. Um, this is gonna be, you're gonna see a little bit more pairing up for a while until they do that. And then we're gonna disperse, but each job is more catered for certain people, some people are more mechanical, I find, others are more academic. So we wanna kind of fit who we have to a position that they can grow in and whatnot. So for me, it's a definite plus. I think it will be, actually become more efficient if we do this.
All right, thank you. I, I appreciate that. And thank you for everything you've been doing for the last ever, forever. Yeah. Um, so, um. Chief, there's a, I have a couple of questions on the change. First, is, is this an open hire or is there a predetermined candidate? Is there someone you have in mind? Or is it, is it a truly an open, anyone can apply and may the best person win kind of situation?
There are many qualified applicants that have applied. There are some that I personally like. Uh, I will not be on the interview panel. I've set it up with a separate staff. They'll be doing it independent of me and they'll forward their recommendations to me and that will be the person that we hire. So that answers your question.
And when you came on, um, because we've been talking about this. I think the idea of this change has been in the air for a long time. And, um. It, it was kind of moving forwards, things got in the way, so it stopped and now here it is again. When it was presented to you, was it basically just, hey, new chief? What do you think about the organization, the police department as an organization as a whole? What do you see as making it better? Or was there any kind of?
I had, I had heard of this topic coming up prior to my arrival at the city. Um, and more recently, the city manager and I have had conversations regarding this and the future of the department, what would better serve the city? And looking at the value of the positions themselves rather than the people that fill them, but the positions and what they offer the community. And I think we were in agreement that a CSO has a lot more benefits. Far reaching and go out and engage the community face-to-face and solve issues out of the community. In addition to all the contributions made to the city within these walls.
And, um. Has, at, at least since you've been, you know, running the show, have you noticed? That the things that the CSO goes, that, that goes out to do and like abatement, you were saying, and then there's paperwork involved. Who's doing that paperwork? Is, is that, is the CSO coming back and doing the paperwork or is that not happening? And the records, uh, personnel is, is doing that paperwork when it really should be the CSO, like police write their own reports kind of situation?
For the example that you gave, the CSO is doing those reports and doing that paperwork. Uh, the records clerk does handle some CSO jobs currently, such as animal licensing. They do send those down. So I'm not gonna say it's a definitive one or the other. Uh, the CSO definitely does a lot of their own paperwork and their own search warrants and a lot of paperwork that goes along with that.
Thank you, okay.
Just, yeah, uh, one for, uh, chief. So having worked in EMS before, I think it's asinine that somebody would maintain somebody else's vehicle or do the inspections on them. So is that, that's something that, I mean, I wouldn't trust somebody to check my parachute if that was jumping out of a plane. So it seems odd to me that an officer would trust somebody else to inspect or maintain their vehicle if they're going to be driving around and depend on it, is that?
So everybody is responsible for checking and maintaining their own vehicle. What is currently happening is the records clerk schedules regular maintenance for the vehicles. So when they hit their, you know, three, four thousand miles, he's scheduled for a whole change and takes the car in there. Um, if the car is in need of mechanical repairs, then they'll reach out to, let's say, Creations or Mike Sartor, who are gonna be doing the repairs and schedules, uh, the days for the car to drop off. Stuff like that is how it currently is done.
Okay. And for Kyle, um, if we continue to, uh, maintain these, the unfunded positions, does that encompass, um, potential hires for the police officers? Whose positions we still haven't been able to fill? And does that, that'll continue to pull away the funds that we have to offer for the positions that are currently empty, correct?
They're, they're fully funded positions. Uh, so I, I would say that they detract from the, the existing officers. It's just their positions that we're not able to, to fill at this point in time. That situation can always change on fairly short notice, but, um, but again, just the overall trend that we're seeing. Uh, and we're, you know, in competition with other agencies, uh, particularly Eureka North, uh, including the sheriff's office have, um, you know, significantly more financial resources, um, in the Hill River Valley. So, um, so that, those are just the context there.
Okay. How many police officers, like literally human beings in uniforms are, are, like, not the sergeant or the corporal, but actually just police officers?
Currently working for the city right now? One.
And so we have four, yeah, three full-time and one point two five. Um. Do we have any prospects? I mean, is there anyone, like, like is the academy happening or is the academy not happening anymore because no one wants to do it?
So the academy is kicking off in June and we'll be, uh, making early visits to recruit at this academy. We do have some prospects for the December academy that are interested and seem qualified. It's just a matter of arranging their lives financially to essentially suffer pay loss to come work for the city while they're going through the academy. Uh, and we do have a potential latter, lateral candidate that we have met with, so that may be coming down the pipe soon as well.
Thank you. Um, and so, so, are there any, please come forward? Thank you, Nate. Thank you for coming.
Uh, my name is Bridgette Vale. I live here in town. Um, I had this huge talk that I was going to do about getting rid of our records technician. But after listening to the council ask questions, now I have even more questions. So, um, currently our records tech is in the office thirty-two hours a week is what you guys have stated. And we're gonna get a new CSO that's gonna be here for forty hours. And you stated that the office is still gonna be open full-time like it is now. So if you look at it, we're only gaining eight more hours of services at a higher rate because the CSO costs more than the records tech. I believe the records tech position is the lowest paid position here at the city. So that's a little concerning, thinking about we're gonna be paying more money for eight hours more of service. If we're gonna be keeping the lobby open to the citizens here in town. And then another thing, the cleaning services, if you have to contact that out, that's gonna cost the city even more money when the records tech currently takes care of those duties. So as a taxpayer, that's, that's a huge concern for me. Um, our records tech has been here for, what, eight, nine years now? And Julie Waddell stated that she has been on our, or on your guys' payroll for the last two years. So you guys have been paying for her position anyway, so I don't understand why we need to get rid of it since Measure Z isn't paying for it anymore. If the city has been paying her wages for the last two years. Um, the records tech has done an amazing job, always friendly, very welcoming, has helped me out several times. So if the lobby is not gonna be open during business hours, that's gonna be a huge hit to the citizens here in town. The police officers are out patrolling the streets and the lobby's closed. You know, what are we supposed to do if we need to come up here and talk to a police officer, like use the phone outside if it's still there and wait for someone to show up? If they're on a call, they're not gonna be there. Um, so I think that hiring a new CSO is great, but I also think that we should keep the records tech. Because if the theory of having a new CSO is to have someone out there on the streets handling everything that a police officer can handle except for arresting someone. Then what's the point of having a CSO officer doing the records tech job forty hours a week in the office? If the intent is to have them on the street helping our current CSO, it just doesn't make sense to me. Um, I think that you guys should really reconsider not keeping our records tech on. Like I said, if the whole point of having a new CSO is to be out there on the streets. Then what's the point of having them sit in the office for forty hours a week? It doesn't make sense to me. Um, as a citizen here in Riedel and a taxpayer, I do strongly encourage you guys to reconsider getting rid of the records tech position. Um, like you guys said, you've been paying their wages for the last two years anyway, so Measure Z really doesn't have anything to do with it, if that's what you guys are stating. Um, and if the CSO is only gonna be approved for one year through Measure Z, then you guys are gonna be putting out more money if you're gonna keep them for future years. Because they're gonna make more than the records tech and we're only getting eight more hours of services.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And would anyone else like to speak? And I would like to just say really quickly, we are literally talking about a position, not a person. Okay, Steph, okay. So, um.
Okay, um, are you guys voting on that? Is it like a vote for this new thing or is it just something that you guys are in the past and you all agree on it? I know you guys can't answer me because you can't come out, whatever, but just wanted to throw that out there. Cause the org chart does the difference for vote, so that's why I was wondering if we, the citizens of Riedel, would vote on this?
Okay, thank you. Any else?
Yes, just prior to the closed session, I received two public records and I will read them. First one, good evening, Mayor, City Council members. I hope this email finds you all well. I'm writing a response to the recent news regarding the proposed elimination of the records clerk position currently held by Sabrina Long. I would like to express my concern about this proposal and voice my support for retaining this essential position. First, I'd like to provide some background and explain my familiarity with the responsibilities of this role and how it operates within the city of Riedel Police Department. I was the first community service officer hired by the Riedel Police Department and had the opportunity to work closely with Sabrina during my time there. Though my tenure was brief, it was in-depth and gave me firsthand insight into the day-to-day procedures and routines she upholds. I urge the council to reconsider the decision and reflect on how integral Sabrina is to the functioning of the police department. She has held the position for nine years, nearly a decade of dedicated service. Her role forms the backbone of the department, organizing and maintaining the many complex components of its records and operations. Some of her many responsibilities include, but are not limited to, K-9 licensing, non-emergency dispatch, court date management, email and task management, committee coordination. Fleet maintenance and office supply management. In addition to these administrative duties, Sabrina also handles janitorial responsibilities for both the police department and City Hall. She removes wastings, restrooms and ensures the cleanliness of both facilities. She understands the inner workings of this department. Her skillset, knowledge and experience are what keep the department running smoothly behind the scenes. I respectfully urge the council to take into account the breadth and importance of current, she currently manages and consider who will absorb these tasks if this position is eliminated. If the goal of this elimination is to allocate funds for a second CSO position, I ask the council to consider. Will CSOs be focused solely on nuisance issues? If so, who will be responsible for the clerical administrative functions of a police station? Will this new CSO position be expected to handle both nuisance enforcement and all of the records clerk's current duties? During my time as a CSO, I found the role to be manageable as a single position. I was able to contact each, each nuisance property and move cases forward efficiently. When assistance was needed, for instance, in cases involving escaped livestock, an officer would step in. Otherwise, I'd handle the responsibilities independently with Sabrina always available to support with paperwork or clerical tasks. Would it make more sense to retain the records clerk position, expand its responsibilities to include support for nuisance issues? The records clerk could handle the clerical side of nuisance enforcement, organizing cases, documenting infractions, writing letters, mailing notices and scheduling abatements. Thank you, thank you for your time and thoughtful consideration of this matter. Sincerely, Jolene Matthews. And I've got another short one and it is addressed to the Riedel City Council. Good evening, Riedel City Council. It's come to our attention that Sabrina's position with the police department as a clerk code enforcement may be terminated. As a business owner in this city for many decades, I can't express enough concern about this. I appreciate Sabrina taking our calls and handling important issues and applications with the Department of Justice with efficiency and speed. Without a clerk, the department would have to delegate these duties to others who are already busy with other tasks. Please consider this action. Signed, Fred Roman, owner of Roman's Sporting Goods. And that's it.
Thank you. Is everything okay? You guys showed up. It makes me nervous. Pretty good. Oh, yeah, we, yeah. I'm just noticing. Okay, oh, okay. Um, okay, so now.
Is there, is there more respect from the council?
Yes, I was gonna, um, any answers? Um, actually.
Yes. Listening, listening to what has been said. From one perspective, I look at it, we're getting, we're getting funded through the county for a year's time. Is that correct? For, for one year for one CSO, we're, we're getting a, a one-year funding from Measure Z. And then in the future, we're going to be able, we'll have to look at, that we're gonna fund them, put them on. So if, if I'm wording this right, it's like we're in a neutral position at this time to have, we're, we're funding with keeping a record technician. And at the same time, work out these other issues, be it vehicle maintenance, whether it be, uh, janitorial work. And still do that without a deficit to the city. Now, at the end of this time, the city secures more, another grant from Measure Z. Then we'll, we'll, for one, we'll know what's realistic, what's spreading out these duties rather than making a rash decision and, and jumping into that now. But to me, it's like we got a one-year window to make without testing the city's finances up. And that's where, where I stand, is to hold on to our records technician. It wasn't like it was a one-year hire the first time around on the block. Uh, they, they have this current technician, not saying it's, so, you know, that's all, but it is. I mean, because that's, that one has been here a long time with institutional knowledge and skillset. Just as we talked about wanting for our CSO, we want institutional knowledge and coverage. And we, we lose them and the others catch up, we're gonna have a deficiency as, as a business owner and other letter mentioned. So without dragging this on too long in my conversation, that's my, my stand. I think we should, we should take a move in this, but not eliminate it for this first year and then till we find out what's gonna happen with this county. And, and, and everybody's warned, everybody knows that that's what's at play. And the circumstances can be, you don't have a job, we don't have a technician, he'd be, applied for, they have a job, apply for that. But we'll know better as a council to make an informed decision in a year from now. Or, or actually before that, we're gonna have a better chance. That's my opinion.
Thank you. Um, and Travis, budgetary wise, is what Councilmember Wilson said, accurate? I mean, as far as, um, how much budget, if we're gonna put the city in a bad place.
I just don't have enough information.
That's okay.
I'll say one more thing. Chief, I, I know you haven't been here a whole, a long time, but I just, I want you to know, I want the council to know, everybody to know. I'm impressed with you so far. I think you've been. I think you've been extremely responsive to the community, not just to the council, but to the community. Um, you've been open, more than open to any programs proposed to you by our Community Resource Center, by me coming in with wild ideas. And you sit down and you say, man, let's make this happen. It is obvious to me that you take this job seriously. And it is more importantly obvious to me that you really care about this town and that you want to leave your mark here and, um, be part of it, you know, I, for, for lack of a better way to put that. Um, it's your department, really. Uh, I, I'm supportive of you. I'm supportive of our police department. I'm supportive of the Police Officers Association. Um, I'm not in there every day. I don't know how things go. Um, I'm inclined to say that I support giving you a chance to do what you think is best for our police department because that's what we hired you to do. Um, so I'm going to go with your recommendation on this. And, and I understand where Frank is coming from too, but I do think we hire a new chief and we say, man, get out there, do your thing. I don't want to, I, I, I want you to have a chance to do your thing. So I am going to say that I'm, I'm going to vote with, with the staff recommendation on this. That's it. Thank you.
Very much. Anybody else have anything to say? Everyone ready to make a vote or to, anyone want to make a motion? Such to motion, any motion? Give yourself that to work with.
I will make a motion to approve the proposed staffing changes for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six as outlined in the attached allocation table of organizational term.
There's a second. We have a motion and a second.
Can we get the second one, sorry? Hmm? Can we set that? Oh, thank you.
Motion carries three, zero, one, uh, two, three, two.
Council reports and communications. May I approach it? All right, here I am. I've got my list. Okay. Uh, Friday of last week, I attended the Cal Cities Redwood Region, uh, meeting. It was in Lakeport, California. It's an interesting place, Southern America. Um, we heard from a really cool organization called the Clear Lake Environmental Research Center. They're primarily focused on wildfire prevention. What I, what I liked about it was obviously the wildfire prevention. But it was a really nice example of a small rural economically impoverished area that had a bunch of different moving parts and they all got together and formed this really cool organization. And they work, you know, closely with the citizens and they work, you know, with the higher-ups. And, and it just a phenomenal, really inspiring, made me feel hopeful that, uh, there, there is something to be done, um, you know, and, and good people out there for small areas like ours. So, uh, that was, that was nice. We have a nuisance, what is it called? Something, nuisance payment, nuisance advisory committee meeting tomorrow here at City Hall, three P M. Um, my redneck meeting was canceled due to Memorial Day, really sad. Um, lastly, the Spade Meter voucher program, I promised you we'd come back and here we are. Um, I met with the executive director of Careers Without Letters about something else, but this came up. She said, Riodale citizens are the luckiest people in the river valley right now. And I said, why is that? And she said, because you've got this voucher program from the city that's just wonderful. And, uh, it's so good that when people come in with a voucher and have their pets fared neutered and the voucher doesn't cover the full cost, they've got other nonprofits now who have come to them and said, we'll cover the remainder of the costs for voucher holders from the city, of Riodale specifically. Um, and it's their way of supporting what we're doing. And, um, it means that our community members are, if they needed, getting free services. They're really important. So, um, shout out to us for that. And lastly, I've been getting a lot of positive comments on the River Trail. People come up to me and say, we drove all the way down there from Lolita and we walked it and we all been, it was so nice and subtle. It's always nice to hear the good stuff, not just the bad. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Little. Um, we're, just one thing, we're going to have the beautification walkability on the thirtieth. And we've got a new member coming who has wonderful, she has exciting ideas. So maybe it will inspire us to get going. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Or.
Um, just want to say, it's got a meeting that the hydrogen powered bus is up and running in the county and making runs. Uh, they've ordered ten more buses. And they have a company currently looking at, um, positions around the county for hydrogen refueling stations. So they are serious about this thing.
Thank you. Councilmember Wilson.
Yeah, I have, uh, it was actually last week we had the H W A. And they're trying to, uh, they have an additional, that we're going to do the budget thing. They're trying to work out this cost of, um, getting all, all I mentioned, I think last meeting, all the cities getting their franchise agreements done. The smaller cities, Eureka, not Eureka, Riddell, Burnell are getting funding. You know, I, I thank our city manager for pursuing that well. But they started to make, they need an additional budget meeting uh, to pull some of this together. And so they're, they're wanting to do that on, the plan is on the twenty-eighth. So we're going to make a plan for a special, uh, meeting on, um, maybe we did in our, in our study here, I'd like to discuss it. The twenty eighth is going, would be a conflict and I'd like to do it before the twenty eighth. And then the other one is tomorrow is R C E A. And R C E A keeps looking at things, um, right now seems to have stabilized down because it was swinging. The power of energy has been moving back and forth. Every time you go in, you're, you're up ten million, down ten million. And, um, so they're, they're looking at some things in the, in that budget to try to, because it has stabilized. And, um, it's still not answering what's happening to our energy with the way our energy grid is going. And it's my intention to ask them to, um, want, want to do a deeper dive into where they're getting their power and how it's going to affect the whole county because of A I stuff and all this is using absolutely astronomical amounts of power to maintain, you know, the broadside of the grid, don't fight, don't drop your car during peak time, don't, you know, these kinds of stuff. So, and it knows the things that are eating this.
Thank you. And, um, I would have reported, but, uh, House Member Or, undercut my H T A. I can say that, um, we, there's a hydrogen fuel cell bus media day on May thirtieth at ten o'clock. It's going to be, we'll be out there on all the H T A board anyway and we'll be, you know, whatever. We know. Um, I also went to the Lakeport, um, uh, meeting and it was very informative. And they went after a grant and their park is absolutely awesome. It is, it's, we directed that grant too. Yeah, and it, it's an amazing park. And so I hope that we continue to fight for grants, look for grants. Um, because it is, I mean, the, the trail, it's like, it makes me so happy. It, it really makes me happy. We fought for that and finally got it. And we got something that people talk about now. And even, uh, G R T A, um, the other day, they were like, well, let us know when you're going to do a ribbon cutting because we want to put that out, um, because they're excited about it. And so the next natural step in just, in something for people to do and be proud of and we've done the gateway. We have a park where the kids are, they have something to do. They have this thing, it's like a ninja thing. I don't even know.
It's a ninja warrior thing.
Yeah, it's amazing where you bong, 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 bong off the things and pull up ropes. And, and it's just like this rectangular square about the size. And those kind of things, any, anything that we can get to improve the city's just enjoyability because it is very important besides all the city stuff and the misery that there be some joy. And I think that the community would really enjoy being able to go to a city park that has amenities, that has beauty. And so my, my plea is, I'm jumping on, uh, Amanda's, I was always on it, but I'm really jumping hard on it now, on Amanda's bandwagon. And please, fighting, 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 looking, looking, looking for grants so that we can develop something here in Riodale.
We're going to do it.
We're going to do it. And does anyone else have anything? Then I will ask for a, a motion to adjourn. Don't move. Got motions in a second? Got motion in a second?